Okay, we're gonna get started. I'd like to call and order this special meeting as the City of Campbell City Council on Wednesday, February twenty eighth, two thousand fourteen. We need a walk off please.
This is Councilmember Biden, present. Councilmember Sebola.
Here.
Councilmember Fratato.
Here.
Mike Mayoral Lopez.
Here.
And Angie.
Present. Uh, at this point, we're gonna have, uh, two public comment periods. We're gonna have one right now. You guys hear me over here? We're gonna have one public co- input comments right now. And we're gonna have a fairly long discussion and then we'll have a second time period later if more people show up. So at this point, I'm going to call, uh, Elise Capra. Yes, come on, and maybe stand over there. Where, it's up.
That's fine.
Alright, um, hi, uh, two minutes, right? Uh, so thank you for giving me the time again to, uh, on my question. So I learned that the City of Campbell currently does not have a cap on rent increase percentages. Last year, I learned that my landlord notified all us tenants about a rent increase to be effective February twenty twenty-three. My rent went up thirty percent because they felt justified to do it since they haven't increased the rent from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two. Since the rent increase, I've been diagnosed with breast cancer. I had asked for an extension to pay my old rent, but that just, um, lasted for two months. Uh, I had to ask for financial assistance, uh, from Kaiser, energy bills and water because of this rent increase. I cannot keep having my mother assist me financially since she is getting very old. I cannot work more hours. I'm in a high-pressure job working as pharmacy technician at CBS. Therefore, uh, it's high intensity. It's not a slow-paced desk job. By the time my five-hour shift ends, I'm extremely exhausted and I have to take naps. So, uh, you know, I cannot work a forty-hour week at a place like that. So I am, uh, this huge rent increase has gutted my finances and I cannot afford leisure like going on vacations or restaurants or movies. Uh, so I'm, I'm, you know, proposing to either put a cap on the rent increase for the City of Campbell. Los Gatos and Mountain View already have caps to either five percent or ten percent, not the City of Campbell. Why can't Campbell have one and protect essential workers like myself?
Can you wrap it up?
Yeah, and, and one more thing, there's a business below my building which is on Winchester, has been vacant. And I fear because no business has moved into that empty space that my landlord is gonna raise our rent for the rest of us because of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Dan Orloff?
Thank you. I'm Dan Orloff. I currently serve as President of the Campbell Chamber Commerce Board of Directors. Additionally, I'm part-owner of Poon Yard Cinemas and Cedar Room. I'm here to advocate on behalf of Campbell restaurant, bar owners and fans of live music. And furthermore, I wish to commend the Campbell staff and city officials, elected officials, for adopting a growth live music policy as part of your economic development strategy plan. To that end though, I urge all of you to consider taking appropriate actions to reverse a decision that was made several years ago which bars and owners, which bars business owners from charging a cover or minimum charge if they're serving up live music events. I've been an active member of this Campbell community since nineteen seventy-seven and for the past forty years, I produced or performed live music. Campbell is the only city in Santa Clara County that prohibits business owners from charging a cover or minimum charge. And while I'm unclear at the reasoning that came about several years, years ago to adopt that plan, I do know that it's become increasingly challenged, challenging for restaurants and bars, including Cedar Room, to be competitive and offer its customers the same bands that Los Gatos, Saratoga, Cupertino and San Jose can, can hire because they can pay more and they can charge a cover. I didn't know, uh, there might have been some rationale for, uh, adopting, uh, prohibiting cover charges in San Jose some years ago, but San Jose reversed itself and discovered when they reversed itself in downtown San Jose, incidents of crime actually went down. So cover charges, if, if a property owner or bar owner decides to institute them, could have a filtering effect. You can deduce from that what you will. Um, anyway, uh, while many Campbell businesses may not choose to charge a cover, they should have the option to do that to be profitable, uh, and competitive. Uh, so removing the provision, this provision would, uh, send a message to music venue operators that Campbell should be their next location, would be strategic and economic development move, would totally enhance our vitality and would totally rock. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so we, uh, Dan, we're gonna have to reset it. Yeah, we're gonna take a break so we can figure out what's going on with the alarm. They're working, they're working out. Okay, so we're gonna take what, five minutes hopefully and, uh, you guys hopefully all stay. Okay. Why not? How's that? Alright, we're gonna start again. Thank you for being patient. Uh, okay, we had public comment. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak right now? Uh, at this point, we're going to start the priority setting session, uh, to develop our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five citywide priorities. And Brian Lepesol, our City Manager, will be speaking.
Yeah, I wanted to provide a brief overview for what we're gonna accomplish, uh, try to accomplish for the day. So got an idea of the flow of the meeting. Um, you know, I'm just really start, um, after I do the introduction by, uh, we have the council. They talk about their expectations. Quiz, um, but we want to make sure that if there's expectations that are needed throughout the day, we're trying to. And if those expectations are reasonable as a group, we need to rank those in a little bit about what we're trying to achieve and not achieve. And then, uh, I'm going to, uh, sort of highlight for you, uh, and we're not gonna go into, uh, great level of detail about what the existing council priorities are and the status update of the existing work plans that support their priorities. There's a long spreadsheet you've got in your council packet, uh, it's, uh, also available on our site. It goes into great detail, uh, about, um, the priorities and where their comments are. And I want to walk you through that a little bit and just give you some context, not with each work plan, but in context. What are some of the heavy lifts that we're working on currently that look like we're gonna, uh, certainly roll into next year and up into the future looks like? Uh, and just what we're doing now. Uh, these aren't staff suggestions. We're certainly gonna take counsel. Want to give you a breadth for what we're doing and what we're doing regardless of adding to the, to the puzzle, so to speak. Uh, and then we'll take council questions on that, um, and have another public comment period after council questions. And we'll come back, uh, and that's the time to hear from the council. And last year, we spent a lot of time with staff presenting work plans. Uh, stood up and spoke for, uh, five, ten, fifteen minutes and answered questions. That process took a lot of time and what it resulted in is that we have heard a lot of real, we've been to council, hear from the council. And then a council respond to the council. And we end up having this schedule next week for that discussion. We hope to achieve that all today by shortening staff, uh, introductions to that discussion. We're here for you to answer the questions. Um, our executive teams had numerous meetings, um, preparing the spreadsheets, uh, and discussions. So this isn't the work of, uh, of Justice and managers, obviously, of all of these executive team, not the council staff. I want to recognize them, even though they're not speaking and telling you anything, recognize they're, they'll bring this together and present it to the council. So we're interested. So with that, um, at the end of that, after council dialogue, we will be asking the council to actually adopt your. And then, um, where we go from there is that staff will help develop required items for your comments. And we'll develop more required items if we believe, uh, we best accomplish those priorities of the council. And those will come in back to you in April when we have our budget study session. Uh, and so this is an iterative process. Today, we're really just here to hear the priorities. I know there will be a lot of ideas, uh, both from public, uh, and council, from staff on, uh, things that we need done next year. Those are what we call work plan items. We're really trying to keep this discussion, even though that we may want to express our ideas. At the end of the day, we're gonna hone those into our conversations. Um, and really focus at a high level, uh, knowing that there are discussions on those. And council will have a public meeting to put the staff on, on those draft work plans and should excel at those discussions. So with that, um, it's appropriate for our team here.
Okay, uh, I thought staff is gonna pop. No, not at all.
Introduction.
Okay. Uh, so at this point, um, if anybody of the council, if you want to talk about what your expectations are today or.
So this is, you would like us to sort of indicate our priorities, what we feel are important to the council to consider as priority.
Not yet.
Yeah, so what we're hoping for right now is just any preliminary expectations or anything you want to make sure that we cover is a discussion later today. We just want to make sure we're on the same page for what we're trying to achieve. I just explained sort of my thought process and how we're gonna do this today. At the end of the day, we're really expecting council to adopt, open the council, um, priorities.
So I'm, I'm assuming that like each of us has some ideas that we think are important. This is the time to discuss. I want to make sure we're.
No, this is not the time to discuss those ideas. It's just if there's any other, uh, expectations or anything you want to accomplish other than what I just described. I'm sorry for.
I'm not sure if you have any, so you can say, um.
Well, I mean, I do have some.
Yeah, we're gonna have comments later. So this is just if you have a certain expectation, we can make sure we cover it today. Other than later, we can have a discussion. Brian added this agenda item, so.
I just wanted to make sure that, that, that we're all on the same page before we get started, what we're, we're trying to achieve for today. And I just laid forth kind of my ideas of what we're trying to achieve. I just want to make sure it's on the same page. I want to be inclusive. This wasn't about staff or Brian steering your discussion today. I want to make sure if there's expectations of you and we're meeting those.
Start with surgeon.
Uh, I'll just say I really support what you laid out. Um, I was very pleased with the process last year, the outcomes, the priority-based budget that you've averaged. And as, as you know, the only thing I wish to change was that initial little bit of messiness as we were learning with this new process at the beginning. Right now, it should be more efficient, so I'm, right, so, discussion and.
So my expectations, I saw the list and I figured this, a lot of projects in progress currently are. So my expectations that we can have today, to get a sense of what ways, the major cases are going to be. And so here are possible new priorities that relate to the mind, uh, adding new priorities when we have all the days to, to. And what's, what's gonna be the given? Change one to add something new. So I think, I think, um, we need to have that really thorough minded discussion. I think as we have, yeah.
Uh, I guess the only expectations I hope to hear means a little bit about our specific priorities. Like, I mean, I know I read through the entire list. I saw the commentary, but, uh, I personally feel like maybe a couple of things like I have. Just a little, I don't know. And, uh, I'm hoping to get maybe, maybe my ass questions that have been pretty detailed. About last year's priorities from this year. Because yes, I agree, there's tons of work that has already been started to get that. Definitely shouldn't add all too much on top of what's already there.
Okay, so I'll try again here. I, I agree with the City Manager that I spent too much time last year. Sparked it was very good, but it did take a lot of time to, to talk about some things that we can, City considers. So I have time to do that, to make, to discuss some priorities. Um, I would like, um, just a very brief presentation on priorities that we did adopt last year in the part of reporting. The ongoing thing and we're still working, of course. And then, um, see for staff to comment on area or responsibility council really focus on. If overlooked or to give emphasis to or requires additional counsel. I'm not in any way suggesting to go through everything that's listed here, just to, um, if something that's significant that we didn't consider or it's gonna be costly or to specifically, on and for this company.
And I'll, uh, read. That I would really like to know what the actual be on this work in progress. And as part of that, are there things that although they are a work in progress, the new things would take priority and what they drop out? So, uh, time and quantity of.
Ask a question. I, I'm hearing common theme and last year, the way this worked was, uh, that staff took our input and then later said, well, here the budget to your patients, here's the good take, here's, I think what's being described. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Are we saying that today or we need that as part of this process?
My take on it is if, you know, like, um, Pod says I have no more capacity. Do you want these new priorities, these things happen to drop out? Now whether we can actually say that today, but, uh.
I think our goal is to provide you as much information as we can. All the answers, there's gonna be something to help develop, uh, we have these values. Hopefully it could be more effective than we did last year. And staff, you're willing, we had many discussions about capacity and all of our staff.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna move on now to the introduction of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four priorities. Uh, Brian is going to explain the spreadsheet by priority and, uh, status update and.
Right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, let's get started. And, uh, I'll start by saying as we go through this, I'm gonna start at very high level. And we're not gonna, as you, as you know, we're not gonna go through every single work plan. Uh, but just because we didn't highlight it. Questions as well, it's, uh, feel free to ask us. It's not to give anything short shift. It's to be efficient with everything we can stay. Um, so, uh, don't hesitate. This is the list of last year's, uh, current year's priorities. There's five of them up there. As you think about priorities, you know, these are very broad. And I've already heard questions about, well, you know, when we talk about sustainability, does that mean that every decision we make has to have sustainability quality? And I don't think that's where we were at with this. I think we created these broad buckets as we have an interest in achieving certain things or work, as we describe that. And then we put them into these buckets. So, uh, really the goal is, is a review of these broad categories today. Decision whether or not we can advise these, add, delete, anything we want to add. Um, so at the end of the day, we're gonna come back up out of the details at, to this level, try to summarize that. And I don't really need these to, um, be, be, I think that the intention last year is we really covered very broad, area, uh, uh, level of areas throughout the city, um, in order to encapsulate everything. And so as we go into the, uh, right, can we? As we go into those priorities a little bit deeper, um, as I said in the staff record, there was a spreadsheet that was sent to you. Um, and although the screen's probably hard to read, I know you have copies, uh, in front of you. But I just wanted to explain the methodology done in this chart. And as was alluded to by Vice Mayor Lopez, uh, last year, we implemented what we call a priority-based budget. Um, linking everything that we do from the priorities to the work plan, back to the budget allocations, back to the priorities. And, and real simple way that we did that is by color coding documents. Um, and so for instance, land use and planning, you see here in the document by the. Uh, is a blue color and everything underneath that is blue, uh, to indicate that it falls within that priority. Uh, and as we move through the sheet, uh, measure O is orange. Financial stability is yellow. Sustainability is aptly green. And then community health, uh, and safety is shaded. Beautiful painting. It's intended. Um, and then last but not least, it's uncolored, colored, uh, left white. Uh, those are operational. These are things that are, um, heavy lift for staff perhaps or take, uh, dedicated staff effort and then don't fall into. We call those operational. And as you look at the chart that I provided to you, uh, I don't see the title on this page here. So I apologize for the display, but on, on the, in the, in the packet, you see titles in each column. There is a progress column. It's, uh, second from the right. Uh, and in that progress column, uh, you'll see colors there as well. And those are intended just to be in two of the, the green, uh, boxes. I mean, the progress means that that has been completed. It's a positive thing. Yellow means it's something that's in progress and red means something that's not. Uh, and throughout the progress columns, you'll see, uh, those coloring. And I think to Councilmember Biden's point here, look at those progress columns. See a whole lot of yellow, not a lot of green. And that isn't that we're not doing things. There's just a lot of things that take more time. Maybe they didn't fit neatly into one fiscal year or maybe they're. Um, and so you'll notice overwhelming amount of, of yellow, um, or even a few reds that are starting. And then in the last column under the comments, what we're really trying to do is give you just a brief summary of where those work plan items were, but more importantly, projections for what needs to come. And I, I prepared the PowerPoint and our slides are working perfectly. Um, to, um, indicate in that column, and I can share this, uh, uh, with the council, uh, public afterward as well, but which, which is, which of those columns, I'm sorry, in the comment column, which of those items are anticipated this year versus, just say it's in progress without a, a color code. Um, in the sheet that I have, not the sheet that I gave, um, to try to minimize, um, when I say there's a lot of things that are ongoing or in progress, which of those things are gonna come off our table? Uh, come off our plate, uh, if by the end of this week. And without going through them line by line, I can tell you that there's only a handful of those. And there is a lot of heavy lift, uh, that was still gonna be going on and we're gonna talk about that a little bit. Thank you. Alright, so, uh, to get to my point, as, as I introduce that, um, make it easier without you have pages through, twelve pages of spreadsheets. Be summarized by department, um, some of the significant, um, things that we're working on this year. Uh, and then also looking forward to next year, um, many, many of those things are a lot. As I go through this, I have three slides, maybe four slides, uh, for the different departments here. Um, but I count twenty-one bullet points and our attempt was really no more than thirty for a department. I know my department has a fourth one there, but it's really shared with you. But even just taking very boiled down, what is the most important for the, the biggest areas? Parties we're gonna bring, um, currently and into the future. Um, that's what these slides are intended to show. And so I'll just highlight these for you just really quickly as we go through these to give you a breadth of our workload. Measure O, construction, obviously. Everyone needs to be by city hall knows measure as well as construction. Um, and it's exciting to see that there's a lot of work that's been doing every, uh, one staff, uh, by our staff, communicating with the public, contractors. Uh, and you'll see that both in City Managers Department. Certainly, uh, elections is a function of the City Club's office, but I've included the City Managers Department just to be, uh, more, uh, agreed with this person. Um, no, we, uh, two district elections coming up in Denver. And, um, uh, as the council knows, that elections can't be, um, issue, time issue, uh, for the City Club's office. Uh, purchasing ordinance relation, we talked about all kinds of, um, divisions, we happen, um, happen in purchasing ordinance. But, um, there is some low-hanging fruit, things that make our processes simple, uh, such as how we, uh, so on, grants contracts. That'll be that with staff, um, and will be drafted by office, uh, as a purchase of, uh, according to. Then last but not least, um, certainly is economic development. It's a sign, pretty much, that's a large part of the cost of this year and many especially about. You're gonna come to the council in the spring, ask if you adopt the final, uh, plan, but you have to actually make it happen, execute. So, um, there's several things in these work plans, uh, and I can detail those for, for example, once. To talk about things like, um, uh, obtaining, uh, coming up with strategies to obtain assistance. Coming up with strategies to fill vacancies, coming up with strategies to prevent linkage of landlords who are in cities. All of those are getting the work by items this year. We're not gonna get down to it without that to start with. So those are gonna be big things, important to us, and we're gonna talk about financial stability, but economic. And then to move on, I'll pick up the pace here, uh, under community development, um, housing programs, implementation. Um, I don't need to speak much on that. It's, it's all about the city, the law. Uh, we just heard, uh, West Valley Mayor's manager meeting today with our other West Valley cities talking about their housing. Significant earthquakes that are coming down, uh, to implement this housing. Uh, implementing, uh, and develop, actually developing before we even implement, find it actually, another significant area for the council. Uh, and we talked about that last year, uh, and not to be underdone, it happens to that. Moving on to public works, I mentioned measure O, uh, Hamilton Avenue Rehabilitation Project. Alright, so let's redo that. Skip public works, we'll go back. Alphabet's ordered to finance. I was really trying to, this is a teaching house. Ruined my, ruined my, uh. So in Finance Department, revenue, uh, revenue generation. Revenue, revenue generation. Study sessions have been coming. In a couple of weeks, we'll talk about revenue. Pension funding has been a heavy topic in the. And then this thing we call facility condition assessment. And we worked on that with public works, but we'll see items you got on next week's council meeting. Always defer to city has experience. This facility condition assessments really try to get on that and allow us to do some long-term planning. Construction follow. Moving on to the City Attorney's Office and Legal Services. Subdivision ordinance, that sounds interesting, you're probably wondering what that all means, but. I asked the City Attorney what goes into that, he said a lot. Building anti-planting, these obligations are really comprehensive ordinances. With everything that we're implementing under recent state law changes over the last few years. But also just ordinances that have been. And to street law. So that will be a big item for the City Attorney. And then talk about cannabis ordinance. In the spreadsheet I provided you, I just. And this is the update that City Attorney's Office was intended for this year. On bringing our ordinances up in compliance with state law and so defined. As the council. Last year when we talked about, it was a question about. Look at storefronts in the future. And that was tabled to a labor date. Perhaps that's a discussion for. Part of the fall, so we're considering that. This update, I just wanted to be clear, if it doesn't get to that function, this update is nearly. Then, under our Police Department, again, we've talked about this many times throughout. Recruitment and hiring and retention of staff is. One of our. And then implementing technologies, trying to make this more efficient. Getting more or less things like drones, things like telepath. This contract. For all that technology. Looking at our CAD systems and our audio. Axon, integrating all that technology. Now, the public works. Hamilton Avenue Rehabilitation Project is where I left off afterwards. This is not the Hamilton Avenue precise plan, but this is yet another significant project. And I think the total project cost is probably somewhere around eleven or eleven twelve for this project. It's spanning three, probably three fiscal years or four fiscal years in order to achieve this. And as you know, Hamilton Avenue is a significant quarter with all of the other traffic impacts and trying to implement bike and pedestrian improvements. This, this is a very significant plan for public works. This is also an item that we asked for federal assistance from. Anna Eschew's office. Since we have still not gotten the final approval of any federal grant for this, but we. Were speaking about. Support this project. And then, infrastructure maintenance. I just touched bases a little bit on this, but this is facilities, infrastructure. All the things we just talked about. And then, as I catch my breath here a little bit, and it's only last because ours is the last. Recreation services. Age-friendly city destination was something to do to support our seniors and our. And we have pursued and facilitate friendly. Which in the past, but it requires you develop a plan. She had to make your city more friendly for seniors and we're embarking upon a new process. And there's been an effort, an effort. On surveys on existing services and. And then, Parks and Rec Master Plan. Not just looking at, you know, how many parks we need, the square footage of parks and acreage of parks, but also looking at. Programming of this facility as those two things sort of. New scholarship project. The text won't be about that, but that's just what it says, is look at funding scholarships. And expanding adaptive and retroretive registration. Something that we haven't. Sounded possible this is a different area for this. It's going to impact recreation, community services going this year. So with that, I certainly didn't cover every work plan that we've been giving you updates. But now's an opportunity. Things in the business, I heard Councilmember one said perhaps more important. Some of you may want a specific update, we weren't here like that. But I wasn't intending to go through and read each one for today. I wanted to give you this broad brush, sort of where we're at and where we're going. And what I will say before I turn it back to the mayor, that when I count those bullet points, and we just went through. Through the different departments, 21 of them. Now, maybe it should be 24, I don't know, but 21 of them are now relying to you without any special. So if each of those items were to come to you once, that would fill up at least one of those being on every agenda. Assuming we add nothing. Now, some of those will take more council discussions, some of them won't take any council discussion. I'm just trying to give you a breadth for, I think, sort of what Councilmember Biden's. There's a lot that we're doing, it's not an excuse that we can't do more. Want to hear from you on what your priorities are. But as we have those discussions, I want to give you an idea of what is already sort of in our minds of what's important. You can tell us that's important. Tell us something else is higher. But I wanted to sort of set that stage for you to kind of understand that there is a lot already on the plate and we want to hear you and put on a plate everything that you want us to put on and hopefully have some dialogue on which to put the resources are. So that was our intent, and I'll turn it back to you. Just questions from the council on any of these departments, staff's hearing.
So the questions related to 21 bullets were then laid for. If I'm asking, and then are we tabbed like what you suggest for this year? So right now we're answering the questions.
Questions about anything I just presented or any of the work plans or any kind of spreadsheet that I provided you. I didn't highlight certainly any of the, all the topics you're interested in. Just topics that they put more likely on or you want council constituents are here, are they all updated? And then we'll get to council comments on future ones.
So questions on what you just mentioned in the.
Hey, one question, just for clarification, you mentioned a slide or two back about the Hamilton Avenue Rehabilitation Project being different from the Hamilton Avenue precise plan, that you're understanding distinctly.
So I, you have your Community Development Director, Eastwood, here and Public Works Director, Perso, here. Perhaps between the two of them, they could provide you contrasting comparison.
Thanks, Brian. So the Hamilton Avenue. Hamilton Avenue Rehabilitation Project is really a pavement maintenance project. And you know, as Brian mentioned, we do kind of have as one of our themes in public works and across the city for that matter, that we need to maintain and rebuild our infrastructure as it gets older and starts to deteriorate. So much like we did with the Winchester Boulevard project a few years ago, where we went city limit to city limit. This is basically looking at trying to, you know, rebuild, if you will, Hamilton Avenue. Now, a big component of that will be the pavement quality because, you know, our roads get potholes and they get cracks and water infiltration and all those wonderful things. But the project will go beyond that in that it will look for ways to improve, improve both bicycle and pedestrian access along the way. So essentially, it's a complete streets roadway rehabilitation project in infrastructure base to make the existing roadway a little more serviceable and hopefully save some, some future funding for the city because the more repairs you do in the present in terms of infrastructure maintenance, the more you save it in the future. So that's really more about maintain what we have already in place and, and then the. The precise plan, I will hand the baton over to Mr. Eastwood.
Sure, happy to jump in. So precise plan is more of a planning effort. On city, we're planning about 2,000 housing units and around every 17. And we have a light rail station, but it's not allowed planning on making that progress. It's a light rail station. To link the two together, I think if you consider the rebuilding streets as the baseline, that's a term that's used on transportation plan. But that is there and will be there as we start planning effort. Question is what additional multi-normal efforts or improvements should we do? Is that a regional 17, is it some other improvements that help? I will note, we've had very close conversations with pod and staff, seeing how all these interlink. This goes to Hamilton Avenue to the Surfing Project. You might remember recently, the city got some funding for a study on how to cross Highway 17. Looking at how that study can be used in the precise plan. Just looking at complete street efforts that are happening on the Esco and some intersection work. Answering all the questions.
Questions about anything I presented for me? Okay, so sorry to keep the light on here right now, but so I know it's, I mentioned up the DMR units. And I'm understanding in fact there are a sizable amount that are expiring this year, I think. So my question is, has there been outreach to them, the tenants of those units? So exactly, and then are there any plans for ways that the city can help so that, you know, if the wreck was up, which is probably inevitable. That if it becomes too much a burden and they are forced to move, God forbid, put out of the streets, you know, what are we doing?
Another question. So in the. So in the housing element, we identified different buckets. But to your point, I can't remember the exact number, fair number of units are de-restricted of portable housing. I believe the year is actually.
Six.
That's a hard time. Yeah, so our, of course, the first question is, can the city do something to permanently stand ready? So the big answer is building, passing the current funding, financing and having resources to buy now. And the financial methods or something. That's part of the funding strategies we're talking about. In terms of actually taking actions, I think it's towards the end of this year, we start outreach. Property owners and tenants, just to notify them of it's coming and then based on the funding, go through the next steps of what can be seen. Thank you very much.
Oh, also, I saw, okay, so in regards to economic development, I saw a mention of. Feeling commercial vacancies and I saw specifically one of the things I brought up last session, which was bacon parcel tax. And I know that we have our big presentation coming next month, so maybe I should wait. It's offline, that's something that I'm really curious about, especially since my understanding is that that can be. That's funny. So, so that means we probably have to like. That's what we make special layer about. So I'm just curious, maybe what's been going on with her? Or it's been to maximum.
So let's start with verse 21, sounding like. Awesome, right now it's on the 21 priorities.
Okay, then I think.
For the spreadsheet, yeah.
I think that was it.
So I had a question. And first, in some of the comments, those are started at some. Curious whether those are just started or. Can be recommended, carry them over and one is the traffic. Others are the irrigation. All related?
Yeah, there's probably a different answer for each of those, but I think in, in, in short, I mean, I think as you've appropriately mentioned, these are priorities for the current fiscal year, so. We still have four months to go and I would like to think that we're going to make pretty good progress on, on, on most of these. The ones that are minor projects, like the irrigation control, for example, will almost surely be done by the end of this one year. Things like the traffic calming policy, that, that may take a little longer because that's kind of a bandwidth issue with our, our traffic engineer and Cassidy that comes out of that group. And, you know, his time is often, often filled with, with review of either, either city projects or private development projects, so he does get pulled in a few different directions, but it is clearly something that we. If we know starting this year, our recommendation would be for that to remain on the list, that we would like to get to that. I would note that we are continuing to form traffic calming projects even without the policy being, being revisited. But I do understand that there's a council desire, I think Vice Mayor mentioned at, at last year's meeting that that is something that he would like to see at some point. So, so most of these will continue to move forward. The, we did identify one as the park and wreck master plan that we're working in production with recreation. So on Natasha's list, it says in progress and on mine it says not started and we are talking about the same project, but, but it will be started very soon. You'll see that at an upcoming council meeting, we'll be recommending the award of a consultant degree. But I think most of these we will begin to, to get to by before the end of the year. But there's a couple, maybe the policy type ones that we may ask for a little bit more time.
Okay, I mean, that's understood, I just.
Sure.
That's a specific start. Going back to the Hamilton Avenue with two projects. When would the paving part of it start? It's a multi-year, obviously, but when exactly was actually to start, begin or when?
I want to say in 2026, but I'm going to look at Amy because it might be 2027. Oh, 25, okay.
What, January?
Summer.
Summer of 2020. Okay, and then, how does the paving part coordinate with precise plan in the sense of the precise plan is showing difficulty? And it's like, I need to bridge potential. Second, Hamilton, wood, pavement and things like that being dug up. Kind of looking at like this Hamilton precise plan is kind of born and maybe out here, you start paving the street. How does that interact with what maybe post?
I would say not much likely good at that because pavement that we have is not very good shape on Hamilton. And, and I think maybe what the planning document might get into is. Which, which I, I think we're actually going to, to, to much of this is a paving project, is making it more bike and pedestrian friendly. So we are taking a look not only at the condition of the roadway in terms of the actual pavement, but when you consider right of way to right of way, which includes sidewalks, curb ramps, the, the. but when you consider right-of-way to right-of-way, which includes sidewalks, curb ramps, the the park strip areas. We really are trying to make that as inclusive as possible, I guess I would call that. For, you know, make that a useful corridor for for all users. And but there are certainly shortcomings with the with the current corridor. As as Rob mentioned, access to the light rail station from the west side of Highway seventeen is is extremely difficult. And and one of the things that we are considering, we're in the very early stages of looking at the feasibility of a separated pedestrian over crossing. So there's no doubt at some point that would be a connection to an existing sidewalk. But I would say it's very unlikely that that would cause us to have to go back and. I mean, that's always a potential at any transition area, but I don't see us re- re-escavating the roadway. I think some of the things that could come up during the planning study that we might not cover during the repaving project would be things like enhanced bike lanes. I mean, we're certainly going to try to include bike lanes to the greatest extent possible. And we will buffer bike lanes where possible. But if the plan calls for something bigger and better, that may be maybe a reconfiguring of the roadway at 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 the most. But but I would not see us having to.
Does the expansion of the off-ramp, is that called precise plan?
That's really kind of kind of stands on its own. I mean, it 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 really does set, it's it's separate from the roadway rehabilitation project. Let me answer that first. I think it's an interesting question, how do we build that into the precise plan? Because we may not want to get too far ahead of the off-ramp project so that it is kind of aligned with the with the planning study. Because we don't have that project moving forward. We do show money in the budget, but it's still a couple of years out. And if the plan is to recommend impact fees or certain developer fees that might contribute to that, it would be good to know that in advance. So in a sense, you want to kind of take stock of all of the infrastructure needs of the area as well as the uses, and see if you can link those together.
Right, uh, let's see. Infrastructure maintenance, nothing cutting streets that's underground, or does that count for streets too?
Can you make sure I'm looking at the same one?
I'm not looking at lines, but Brian under Public Works lists a three, I mean, metro, half-time, construction, and structure maintenance.
Well, infrastructure maintenance is a lot of 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 what we do. And so we currently have have a theme in place right now. Because every time we come to council, you're trying to hear the same story from us, is that we've got a lot of infrastructure to maintain. And the earlier that you can perform preventive maintenance, the longer you can extend the life of those assets. So actually, Hamilton Avenue is actually a great example of that as well. But as the city manager mentioned, you've you've seen a roofing project come forward. You've already brought the building and roofing project forward. We're going to bring an authorization to go out with another roofing project. So these are the types of projects that that we are really focused on. Things that will protect the assets that we have far cheaper to maintain our infrastructure, whether it's a roadway facility, a playground, an irrigation system by doing preventive maintenance as opposed to letting the asset run its course and then having a wholesale replacement at the end. So a lot of what we do is trying to get a handle on what what is the current condition of all our assets. So we've always known, we've had a good idea of that for our our street system for quite some time. Kind of the last piece of that was doing this facilities assessment that you saw up there that we worked on with the finance department. So so getting the information out of that is is starting to drive the types of recommendations that you're going to see in the upcoming CIP and in future budget years for for investments that we should be making, maintain our our. Of all assets.
All assets. And let's see, the last one. Your answer is so, so with those questions. Great, and I don't. Didn't have down about opening up comments now, but I think we should work on five, so second round. So how do we do it? Okay, we're going to take the second round of public comments. If someone from the public that wishes to speak right now on any items, please come forward. Or you can wait till the next, the third time. Yes, one hour. Want to go over here to see your lovely face?
This is my first meeting that I'm attending, so sorry if I made mistakes, but thank you for having me over here. I am Megna Varma, and I'm a resident of Campbell. I just started a company called Jabara, which is on a mission to stop and eliminate single-use plastic from everyday events and just social events that we have, social gatherings. For example, right now, I see our table right there for snacks, and we have fifty plastic, approximately fifty plastic bottles or more. And, you know, all the single-use waste plastic goes straight into landfill because I don't even see its recycled bin. So the awareness in our city, while we are working on our climate action plan, the awareness in our city is fairly low. If you walk around in our parks, and I've attended a few, and I've been, I'm a mother of two, so I've done a lot of birthday events. All our parks add up after, on weekends, add up with the plastic, single-use plastic waste, which cannot really be segregated because it's all mixed up. So I just wanted to request that we kind of raise awareness. I know the new park at the coast of the downtown has, you know, proper separation of waste. So what are the, I want to be, I want to know if they are tracking the numbers of how many people are actually using? Do are people even aware of how to separate? And then taking the learnings from there and probably applying it to all of our other parks as we, you know, as we build and improve a community, a city. And the other thing is, while we raise awareness as a city, maybe have our city events to be more sustainable. Talk about use more rental products, you know, for these events, for small events, for large events. And be like the first city office that has rental or reusable items. I know other counties and cities like Alameda and Palo Alto, they're all working on stop waste programs. So I would encourage that when we rent our facilities, my child goes to a school right here, and we have a lot of events at the in the facilities here. Have educate your audience on how they can separate waste, how they can rent reusable options versus getting single-use plastic. So that's that's my purpose of being here.
Right on time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here from the audience that would just keep that on the same, give it a jump up? So we'll be back, close to public hearing, the second part, we'll still have a third. And so at this point, we want to start making some comments on suggested priorities for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. So I know we're. Support, I'm sharing all your proposed ideas.
Okay. So, so things I wanted to mention, I think were first to consider. The first one is, I think we need to give some attention, and I'd like to pay attention to our fire service. Specifically, the fire department, I've had some preliminary discussions with the city manager. But I think. It's too important. Specifically, what I'm getting at is, of course, we, they negotiate yearly contract, so with the fire department for their service. And they let us know how much it costs and so on. We have not consolidated with the fire department. That is one issue that probably should put to, in my preliminary discussions with the city manager, as we kind of through this. It does appear luminarily that we are in a better opposition now. As opposed to completely consolidating with the fire department. The fire department, their consolidation, take all responsibilities. However, currently, our business that we see, heat, tax, and associated fire service. And we do better than that right now than good part of our money there. So that is just part of the consideration. But it is, under the current situation, we do own the two fire stations. And both stations have been with us for a long time. And I think that it's time to take a look at potential rehabilitation that may be needed to those stations. And I think fire service protection has changed over the years, and those departments have gotten some. Just need to, you know, really pay attention to that. Suggest that we kind of set up a workshop with fire service and the leadership to talk about what they feel needs to be done at their stations to maintain the quality of service that we have from. And no question about the quality of service that we receive. It's like, get along very well together, back with paramedic service and response times. And obviously, no questions about that. This is more the the old subject of infrastructure, if you will, and in the building. So just feel that we'll have some attention if we do. And quite frankly, if we make some changes to the fire station or. So that's one issue. The second issue, not a. My other items are not such significant, as significant as the first one I just mentioned. But I think we need to pay some attention to our historic preservation. We have a very proud history in the city, a very important history that extends really to many aspects of the valley that have been involved with over many years. And I just feel that pay some attention to that, how we're observing our history and how we advertise and market ourselves a little better based on our history and what we've done. At one time, when we were thinking in the library many years ago, had posed an idea that a section or a room that would be reserved sort of for stored documents. Of course, that was the time before we had the ability to digitalize it for everything to be applied. That whole concept has changed, which is great. But maybe there's still a way to sort of merge and advertise our history a little more. I know display pick cases, which are great, City Hall, maybe even the library. We're going to consider something to sort of attention to that, as sort of a. Now, what we are saying, we're celebrating with our early settlers, celebration of our historic days, the oldest continuous public celebration in the state of Illinois. So that's the second item. The third item is, again, something that I just think needs attention because it problems come up. But several individual problems this year, and that is the whole problem of payment ordinance. And our affiliation with the county, that's caused a lot of problems. We've had a bit of tortures come up, saying on the list that you're charged every year once they're on it. But I quite realize that, due until they take it off the list. Maybe some special exceptions for me. But I I think our goal, to have a unit of eight ordinance that is more aligned, maybe we should consider no longer affiliating with the council. So with with the county and their program, let's simply carry on. In any event, our own, we may have tortures badly outdated. And then my final project, elusive this time, is. Always on the council here, live in the city. And I'll always speak for myself, but I travel every day throughout the city. And I find our whole stoplight system non-responsive to traffic. Oh, there's long delays and waiting at stoplights, and some lights don't work. And sometimes the left turn activates, and there's no queue, so on. It sounds like a small problem, but when you're doing it every day, it's noticeable. Or it just means a lot of wasted gas and pollution, if you will, waiting at stop. So I just wonder if there's a way to take a look at that and see if there are more modern systems that we might consider. I don't know that there are. But at one time, we had a system that actually was more responsive to try and get some change, more grid, so on. So we're not an expert in this area, so I won't present solutions. I just feel it's an issue that needs to be. So those are my four comments. Thanks.
Just after your last comment, add on to that, because that's one of my things here is that your plan is finding a transportation that will work alongside ETA to show commitment to prioritizing traffic and using public transit. So that sounds like a lot, and it is a lot. But one of the things specifically is, I glad you brought up stoplights, because that's what I'll actually let Sergio talk more about it. Prize chair to you currently, but I agree full heartedly that there needs to be work done there. Oh, next up, this should be a relatively small thing, I hope. But have we reached out to the tribe since last October? Bigger steeple days, what colors they, it's appropriate. I think we really need to get that. It's like, should be simple. You know, long before October, let's let's get there. What colors they feel represent. Okay, so for like community health, community health and safety. I'm hoping for an increase in healthy food distribution for the media. One thing, and this is everyone I talk to, they basically say volunteers are really good. That's one of the reasons why not enough food goes out to simply, there's just not enough tiers. So I'm hoping that we can maybe use some of our city social media, maybe our website, specifically. You know, have a a link that maybe goes to the county or wherever, where you have an updated list of where you can get distribution within our own city. Also, of course, noting when, where, you know, times where. See, so like I already mentioned, kind of, just maybe hopefully have some periodic posts, you know, that that give reference, you know. There it is, and just so that people are more aware. I don't think the awareness is out there. And I'm just going to suggest, obviously, it would be completely voluntary, but I think, you know, we did as a group, whoever wants to, you know, like volunteer ourselves, so we don't distribute to council. Exactly, we said any city hall, that that feels like, that makes something, obviously, that mandatory. So yeah. Yeah, basically, just mostly an increase in the information. Or get the food, and try and court, oh yeah, and also the court volunteers. We have the social media press website, and just always ask, like, hey, we need some volunteers. Also, in finance, I think you should probably conduct a study to see if marijuana sales in Campbell would bring in enough revenue to be worthwhile. That study, I feel, is a necessity to see if this is this is something that would actually, you know, because obviously, we just talked about, which effort is being put into all these other things. And so I think a study, helping, or to see, do we go down that path? It's a good, I think, city, that's a good. And and hopefully have a complete life also, for the council to give their input. Okay. So again, this was from last year, I mentioned, I mentioned already, the bacon parcel tax. So I won't say more on that, definitely. More about where we're. More about where we're at there. And last, but certainly not least, uh, we heard it again today, recent council meeting, but. Rent control and tenants' rights. Um, I mean, I literally keep seeing article after article after article. Uh, you know, like I'll just read a few real quick. Uh, sixty-two percent of Americans are living paycheck to paycheck. Two-thirds of American renters are in unaffordable housing situations. I could go on, there's so many arguments and they seem to be increasing, and and I actually have been getting more of the specific issue. Like, you know, I've been here a little more than a year, and that was the thing that surprised me to hear, but now it's just, it's almost endless. So I think that, uh, we should definitely double down. And that's it for me.
Um, sure, I'm happy to go. Um, really, um, some some great discussions. I think what I'll try to do is uh. Bring up some ones that happened. Instead, I'll start by saying, um, I I think I'm in strong agreement with. What I've seen that's on the spreadsheet with twenty-one that that did, um, and although it hasn't been mentioned, I I do think that's a five large. Five major buckets that we devout last year carry over very well this year. So I'd be in in favor of Moses as the five overarching. Buckets along with that kind of operations category. Um, I I see a lot of great things there. But a couple of things that I'll say that, uh, I I haven't seen mentioned or or that just come up today. One is for uh, uh, finance and and I guess really the city manager's office. I'd be very interested in having us look at maintenance to your budgeting. I I learned about this from actually taking a public finance course at at Berkeley, just so that's a best practice. Um, that actually a lot of our neighbors treat the county does, um, and that helps a little bit more with long range. But but like shorts, uh, council in this case still gets the same kind of opportunity to weigh in. It does provide, from my understanding, it's provided. And when we're thinking of things that are organized about and take capacity, I think something that could potentially add some capacity would be really valuable. In in the future, um, and and from what I've learned, I'm certainly not the expert. In finance, but with one year, you're really just rushing from one year to the other, uh, kind of constantly budgeting. So that's something I'd be really interested in. Um, I I do also. Well, so I'll preface this by saying that, you know, uh, thank you Elliot, uh, he's the advisory board member Elliot for, um. You know, mentioning my role with ETA, starting next year and then the following year, so for a two-year term. Uh, if if I am chosen to be back on ETA, I'd be serving as chair, and so I'll, you know, I'll just, I'll I'll mention my. I don't think my tendency is to uh, center myself in this kind of work, but I do want to look at it as an opportunity. For Campbell, I I do just, without going into the many decades of history on this, uh, I do think that the West Valley has been neglected in many ways in our. Transit system and and planning, um, there's been a lot of, uh, just if you're looking at those kinds of leadership positions and really ask good. San Jose or the county supervisors from from San Jose, uh, the last time that we had a. A V T A chair from Campbell was in two thousand and three, but I just think that with everything else we're doing, um, with some of the grants that I see. Mentioned, uh, or in 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 the spreadsheet, um, for the possibility of buying for bicycle master planning. Or even just for simple coordination, for example, working proactively with ETA to really activate that. The integral station as the master plan. I think there's a lot of potential and I I don't want that to to be lost because like you think we have this real opportunity. That we haven't had throughout the. So I'll I'll just preface it by saying that as just my overall increase as any possibility. Uh, for for any of these items, I I'm actually more than happy and and, you know, I know our staff is great. Uh, our our staff's in technical advisory committee, but uh, I I'm happy to join meetings or just connect with or or just. You know, help uh, be that bridge to open up some opportunities that that. Well, I mentioned specifically, I'm really interested, uh, as, um, councilor's as well mentioned, transit single bird. This is something I've had preliminary, uh, uh, conversations about with ETA. Um, and ETA currently has been having their own preliminary conversations, uh, about the possibility of offering up some kind of, uh, grant funding for this. Good news for us is that San Jose, the county, which again, it to it layers a lot of ways, um, and obviously a lot of population. They've already passed a version of this policy, so when you team talks about over three hundred. It really is for the smaller cities, I think they have an opportunity to take advantage of that, one of the first, uh, almost be kind of a prioritize for your alcohol first. Um, and craft a policy that that works for us before it's been, uh, developed and fully built this out, which I think. Next couple of years, right? Um, and and which I'll mention, uh, okay, kind of mine as V T A shared and I'll support that after throughout the rest of the county. I did appreciate, I wanted to mention a couple of the comments. Very much appreciated the, uh, commentary spoke today on single use plastic. I haven't, I don't think brought this up since your last party planning session, but it actually has been on my mind for for a year now. That with no disrespect to our staff, but with these little plastic water bottles and and I usually I try to bring my, uh, Taylor Swift reusable water bottles. Because I I am a Swift, but um, I I just think, uh, I, you know, anything that we can do as a city. Both on a policy basis, I'm I'm sure there are things that we can get up on to sustainability, I think that's a common interest to. But also by setting a good example as a organization, like, uh, ourselves and not trying to be by example. I I think relatively low level, as we heard today. Uh, I am very interested in, uh, exploring some of the possibilities I keep up with. And Orla, we spoke today about live music and the impact that, uh, current ordinance has on that, explore that. Again, something that I would hope would be a relatively low level, but if you're looking at, um. Vitalizing live music and supporting what's there, uh, and and I think this is something that's also coming out of and also to me. Already, already, uh, I I think it's good, uh, in the area. One other thing I wanted to call out because I think it was into a couple of the other things that that my colleagues have brought out. Is really placing our focus this year on strengthening our communication skills. And and I I I mean that as broadly as possible, so we've had people this year, last year, talk about, uh, social media. Talk about our our website, making sure it's here, um, and I certainly, I I support all of that, but I think we really need to be. A larger signal, it in the past, we talked about, uh, having a failed position. Haven't, we haven't done that, but I I do think there's a need, um, for just some some kind of leadership. I'm very, very fortunate to have the staff that we currently working on social media. But I think as we think about how to make sure that our organization is resilient, that there's succession planning, all these things we're doing as an organization. That we need to be, same part, we need to be some channels, and, um, this is where I'll roll over into, uh, touching on some of the things that my colleagues brought up. Elliot totally agree on, you know, your ideas for making sure of social media, uh, but I want to make sure that we actually, we have the strong channels. That we can then send out the information to and then just kind of make sure we're. Best practices there. I I I also to pick up on something that, uh, you're saying Elliot, I I would be interested in being at. But I would, what I would call at this point tenants' rights probably, uh, it it does seem to me and and without, uh. Foreclosing or saying, you know, we have only one particular policy to. I do think it's appropriate as we look at our larger housing program, and 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 this is where I would look to our housing manager, I'd I'd look to our municipal director. Or guidance, um, because I I I think it's, I I don't feel informed enough now to say, you know, we should have. This kind of policy or we should have, you know, this number of cap to whatever, um, but I I do think there's a gap there. Among our programs that that it's 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 time to look at and. Whatever we need to do, whatever, you know, considering these be considered in the context of the other, uh, very exciting, very robust housing work that we're doing. Uh, so so that is something that I I think, uh, could have a potential for. I'll obviously get some great ideas brought up, I I think I I would for some of them want to hear, uh, you know. Your staff weigh in, uh, what kind of trade-offs they might have to face, but, um, I I don't, I don't think anything that that I would. Take issue with necessarily, or just be about finding that that balance, but, um, and as always, one of my favorite sessions, it's incredible and always staggering. Maybe the amount of work that we're doing, so really just wanted to thank our staff for.
So I'll start off by saying that I think that the five buckets are still relevant. That will be carryovers in the future. Uh, for me, the priority is actually financials. Since I've been on the council. Constantly talked about structure, our vision, our. Health, stuff, our jobs, technology needs are a lot. Change on on day to day, um, financial system improvement, so really we should be on our financials. Focusing on revenue stream or revenue. As far as, um, some of the. Our current program, which is. The rent mediation program, which has been has been. Housing. Um, I'm not advocating for renting. Some of our debt and pressures, some of the kind of issues. Go in order, good information. As far as the fire services and assessment, I totally. Fire happen, so that's, um, that's critical. Not only to facilities, um, assessment, but also to our. As far as the single plastics. But some of the contractors did a mental job out there every, some of the educators educated. Push container to go into. Or should be able to provide. So I think that's that's.
Okay, great, thank you everybody. So I'm gonna start out in the sustainability category, and one of the things, uh, I should talk to. About this, to what end do we. So ca- if sustainability is our category, size and. And it boils down to no single use plastic, that's what I mean by to what degree. Embrace all sustainability topics, and how do those trickle down to day to day? Again, you just mentioned, um, the, uh, public awareness, but also staff awareness. Also, do we only do, uh, things that are mandated by law, like recycling program? Or do they go beyond with those basics and kind of how sustainable? And so under sustainability, uh, I know some of these we are working on and are on a work plan, but just a little more emphasis. Starting January one, there was a law that passed about turf and the fact that it's high water use. And, uh, commercial buildings, uh, are not no longer going out to water any turf areas that are non-functional. So for instance, I'm looking out the window at all the lawn that classify as non-functional turf, will that be functional turf? If it's non-functional turf, we either by this new law have to turn it off and not water it. Or by our own choice that we say no lawn, then what do we do with it? How do we back in? Pretty much like those in the past, but this new law is is you're gonna start seeing brown lawns more than. Said, personal projects, so long we're gonna be able to add lawn or, um, bottle lawn. So the next item under that is, um, let me, uh, there's this thing called M Wello. Municipal water efficient landscape ordinance, which is actually in the state code. So when you're doing a project, there's all these water calculations for outdoor water use. And we stay drought tolerant plants, that doesn't mean that we say native. And native not necessarily meaning native plants to Campbell, but native plants to the state. And several cities have a native plant ordinance in their planning documents and in their. For instance, or in Cupertino has, you can only use California native plants on this project. Two, two things that will go along with that is the Santa Clara Valley Water District. Has a program along creeks where you're trying to keep our gene pool. And like down to collecting seeds from the creeks that are local to then grow plants that are are local, the name of the gene pool. Uh, we don't have, what I've been reading, nowhere I can find anything that's drought tolerant, so there is a difference. Some of you guys talked about recycling and to what degree, is it just the, uh, plastic, is it just the water bottles? But how much beyond what we already do, I feel like we are doing a lot, but a lot is usually what we. So how do we expand beyond that? Okay, so adding on to the irrigation watering of plants, reactors, not all in the city limit of Campbell, and maybe not. Most of them have stands of redwood trees. Start off by saying they are not native to Campbell. And they also require a lot of water, but they really make an impact in the state. Shade, they give habitat, they. The appearance and everything, so runs along Highway seventeen, a lot are dying. Uh, turns along, uh, San Tomas Expressway that are dying. There's multiple reasons why that's happening. Again, because they are high water use and that they aren't native, but. How do we embrace what we have, uh, try to retain them, try to like make sure they get watered from the other cities, but. How do we deserve street cannibally that we have? Other thing that has come up recently and I, Brian and I briefly talked about this today, I don't know what the impact is going to. There was a Berkeley lawsuit about, um, Berkeley said no new gas, and they won the lawsuit, people who. Objected to that, one case of they have to allow gas. So how does these reach codes that we pass are affected by this new lawsuit? Ever, but past certain reach codes, we only did minor reach codes, and so do are those have to go away? Or do we want more information about no gas? I'm kind of in the position of, okay, we can't run any gas, and when we call to need to say something, they say, well, turn on your generators, we want your. To my gas, so how is that whole thing going to affect us and our policies, um, our. Last couple of months, like we had, um, young family just had a date, and they're in a multi, uh. Multi-use development, there's a, uh, they ran, and the man next door is smoking in that building. And their smoke was flowing in the window, or they. And the man next door is smoking in that building, and their smoke was blowing in the window, or being. Branding baby, and actually, the more they asked him, the more he stood out deliberately and smoked it. So we're building all this high-density housing, building family units. We have a no smoking policy, and some cities do have that, um, you cannot smoke in a multi-use building. As a specific spot, so that we have a policy. Um, so. So back to sustainability, uh, how does that trickle down to our purchasing? Um, I had some discussion with several people about, um. We have a climate action plan that talks about fuel and gas. How do, say, for instance, our shirts that we buy, uniforms? Do we allow, uh, polyester fabrics or things that are not sustainable? Do we start looking at how, like, does everything have to be cotton, does everything have to be natural fiber? But that's just one, like, when we buy paper, is there a percentage of recycled components in the paper? Or any of our other products or materials? And, um, also, the next one is AI. Uh, what is our AI policy? Are we, I, I know legal, there's some question, I think Brian told me, you can't do something legal. But how are we going to embrace this coming, it's here, we're doing, or businesses are having to evaluate, how much are they going to allow AI to? Uh, you know, can you write your resume with it, write your RFP with it? Uh, what's the day-to-day operation of what, uh, it is allowed to, uh, ground AI? And the, uh, last one for. Um, currently, we have big chunks of civic, civic center fenced off. Those specific fenced areas are going to be improved. But we have other parts of the civic center, like the Ainsley House and the frontage lawn, uh, civic center drive. To, from my perspective, going to close the green to concerts now, two years or one more year? Does there, is there improvements in the green that we could do now? I, I have a very specific one, is the sidewalk keeping and lifting and grounded down, and, but it goes like this. And so is that, is now during this construction of everything else, a good time to really say, okay, we're gonna improve the civic center? So I'll go back to the whole grass and the water, the frontages, lawn. Okay, well, if we're gonna have to turn that off and it goes ground, do we just take it out, do we want the plants, and if we put them in, are they native? So, but the holistic approach to the civic center. Like Ainsley House, it's the foundation, the roof, garden, the trellis, the weather, we have baby. So to me, I'd like to see the bigger master plan, uh, work, because I would hate to see us take all the fences down, open it back up and. Close the green, fix the repair, the utilities, repair sidewalks. So traffic calming, uh, I know it's on the work plan, but it hasn't happened. My specific neighborhood, it's asking me every time to see one, when are you gonna have an updated policy? And I don't know if I got this right, Tom, but I think they applied and they didn't qualify, and so the updated policy may change in order to qualify. But it's on the list, it's not gotten started, and I think it's important, especially when we start talking about. Green streets and bike lanes and pedestrian access, um, so just traffic calming also. And just one last round, round.
Yeah, I, I would like to ask specific questions of some members about specifically tenants' rights and right control, because I felt a little gentle. Sounds like we're in agreement, that's something that's happening. But I'm gonna be very specific, I'm saying that there needs to be some, better than the states there, which essentially is ten percent of the years. When yours can raise their rent, that's legal and valid right now. Your own city ordinance, and so, I'm saying that we do better than that, a lot better. And I'm very, very concerned, especially if we have an economic catastrophe. Whatever that means, is your next or ten years without, whatever. This is just simply unsustainable, we talked about sustainability, I don't know, we need to talk about sustainability with, with here. And it's really at a precipice right now, that people are just simply gonna, wait, we're gonna have a lot. We're, we're heading that way, like I said, look it up yourself, there's so many articles about how most Americans can't afford a five hundred dollar breakfast now. Everyone's living, uh, majority of Americans are now, check the paycheck. And we all know how expensive Bay Area rents can be, and they just continue rising, even the best landowners don't, they don't raise it every year. Still, very, very significant, I just see it as unsustainable. So I'd like to do some feedback, but are possible objections to just looking into that specific out? See where we're at?
Um.
Or, or in the left?
Yeah, uh, I, I'm gonna wanna take a break here, that's when we go down this ground. Then we're gonna come back, and that's the, I'm the things we're gonna discuss, how this carries down.
Yeah, um, I, I think, uh, two quick things after hearing, um. Your, your comments especially, um, I, I definitely agree with, um, smoking, uh, smoking ordinance, um, I. I was surprised to get that comment, I just, I don't have, you know, I, I don't think you've had enough information, but. Um, I, I, I also realized that I didn't, I didn't, when I mentioned, uh, transit signal priority, that I didn't necessarily explain that, so I just wanted to give a, uh. Report about that, I, I think, uh, somewhere staff members. Uh, but that is just aligning the traffic signals, so that, especially in thorough, either thoroughfares, uh, so that public transit. It could not priority, uh, I get, uh, in these speeds, uh, uh, up to twenty percent for residents who use transit. Uh, for relatively low cost, there is some cost depending on the technology transition over, uh, but in my conversation with TA, I, I. Get a, a good deal, if not all of our priorities that we have, I covered that, so some additional context as I go.
Uh, the one I did not mention was the cannabis, and, uh, I know bills. State laws have changed, uh, it does keep coming up at our council. Um, but there are issues, some cities have a tax above the state tax, and, uh, stores are closing. That people are not, because the taxes are so high. Um, there are also, the black market has gotten worse since the state passed the tax that been amended to your payment, it's ten, ten percent for the state, and then for San Jose, it's ninety percent. So if we are even going to, we look at the cannabis, as one of us said something about. Uh, one of us said something about what are the costs, what is the benefit, are we really gonna make taxed dollars? I think, same as they started, they had the ten million dollars, but they had sixteen stores, and they're a much bigger city, so. I'm not sure what our real benefit would have tell, but I think some of that's gonna come out. To look at, is there really a benefit to add that to a category of our consistency? Okay, so, one more?
I forgot to mention that as well, which is that, I, in exploring that, it made that make sense for us, that, where we don't spend too much on just the process of your valuing.
Okay, so at this point, we're gonna take a ten-minute break?
Can I comment, because I have another meeting to go for more civic duty stuff, minute and a half.
So I'm gonna have to open the public meetings four times now?
You can.
Okay, I'm gonna let you squeeze in here.
Okay, squeeze in real fast, I can do it, keep up tight. I am Nikki Canodes with the Mike and Nikki Honey Company, I am the last farm-in camel, I'm here to make sure we reuse, reduce, recycle, repurpose. I want you guys to have the ability to make business easier in here. I'm doing the hard part of building business and employing local people, I get my cars repaired, I need you to be civic, reci- environmental, but make it easier to do business. I was gonna put a commercial kitchen in here, you wanted me to put in French drains, sidewalks on McGlinsey, and there are no sidewalks on McGlinsey. Instead of me putting a million dollars into that building, you got zero, and guys are sitting there cutting, uh, counters in it. I moved on to San Jose, because I was, I couldn't get it in because the civic and the process wasn't. I, it was legal, but you wanted me to do things that no one else is doing in order to do it. I'd like to employ more people, I like to have my business based in Campbell, I like to promote everyone here, I'm tied into it. I can bury you in how we can reduce, reuse, put water in the aqua, for grow food locally in tiny little spaces, surely I can do that, but please, the main part for today. Is make it easier to do business in Campbell, so I can stay, because I live and love Campbell, but I work and do in other places. But like he says, I might go to Reno. Have a great day, I appreciate each and every one of your civic duties, it is important to serve your community, thank you.
Okay, now I'm gonna take a ten-minute break.
You got it.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm ready.
But you have more slides?
I do not have more slides.
Or, just seems a little dark.
Thank you.
Okay, there we go.
Oh, yeah.
Little, little lighting.
That's not.
Oh, wow.
What a, what a scene's for up here.
Oh, that's really fun. Yeah, that's good. Okay, that's all about law through drinks, uh, so. Right now, we're going to have our, um, council feedback and questions of staff, and we'll also hear from staff. And, uh, after that, we will make some decisions and voting on what, uh, new strategic plans we. Strategic topics that, uh, so do we want to start out with staff as a question?
Yeah, let me, uh, at least type it by, uh, some guidance of how this all gonna work, because I think it's gonna be difficult to go through line on by line, and get to council member comment. Um, though some consensus, uh, to some degree, some of these things were mentioned, um. Uh, you know, the larger policy items, certainly, uh, things, we probably, both on. And others, and council may wanna weigh in today on, and find some feedback instead. A lot of these items, uh, we, we will have to probably, uh, take, figure out what we need to develop, and we'll try to, and be prepared. Talking about capacity, I know I said I would, to the extent we can, uh, talk about capacity, I really would take these on. I don't know that I could say we could take on, uh, items one, three, four from Sergio, and one, three, three from Dan, and. Uh, but, but generally speaking, uh, I think the council are pretty feeling that there's a lot already going on. And, uh, I didn't add up the number of things that were mentioned by council members, but. To the twenty-one other things that were done up there, there's, uh, it's gonna add to the workload, not just on staff, but what we can accomplish ourselves. So, without putting limits on you, I will say that regardless of the conversation, pay, direction of council, priorities themselves. When we come back with those work plans and these areas, um, just like we did last year, we prepared, say, you know what? Between these five items that we have planned to be going through, um, on the, on the foundation of it. What I heard generally from the council was some broad, uh, agreement on the five topics, not every council member had that, but I wanna hear the council do that, that's really important. Those five, uh, all the work plan items in between, um, we will do some work, and we will come back. Uh, but yeah, there's some interest that council members have, actually, we cut that back in short. Um, so now, often, for some of that feedback, obviously, uh, if council has questions for us, we'll try and answer them.
Um, I have one question, um, Mezuro is one of five big categories, well underway, do you wanna keep that as one of five, or make it a subset of? How would you word it? We have five categories, Mezuro is one category within the five. Wanna keep that as one of the main five categories, or do you wanna have a subset of?
Well, I think Mezuro is gonna be a project that, I mean, that's gonna go on for two years, it's pretty much, our decision process of this is concluded. It certainly is a priority, because it's two major buildings in the city, but I don't know that, he has a council need to, earlier. We've set everything in motion, so, I guess, to be blunt about it, I don't wish to keep it on our priority list, it doesn't mean it's not important, but I think at our level, we're. Respectively, we level, anything we can do. And if it, if it is, certainly, uh, well, sure, but, so I would then just kick it off a few days.
That's one of the five categories.
Yes.
I can see why, I can, since it's, the wheels are in motion, it's off to the races, I mean, we got it done. Ish.
If I may ask?
Yeah.
I, I consider that, so is our, or even though council.
Easy, easy logic and net.
A lot of their work is in focus on. I have, I think it was progress, so I mean, it's hard work, and there's, if, if it's not a priority, then. Um, something. If it's not identified as a priority, and they focus up the, um, avenue for add priorities and new, which would impact.
Well, in essence, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I. What we want, what specifically we want to. It's just that we have, we have managers in place, construction managers. Guess I would, pretty sure, the staff has to say that.
And, and I, I, I think both sides make a lot of sense, I just, and in addition to what you're saying, I need a signal to maybe, I. See it as a, as a priority, and I know taking it off doesn't mean that we don't make it to work, but I, I, it's not.
This is brought up in his five, because, um, four with Mezuro going under, say, the team aspect of it, or financial, or the long-term planning. Other categories, like very specific, everything else has subsets on there, that's why I'm asking, if Brian started asking, if you all agree on.
Well, yeah, and I'm speaking more generally, because I know not all of you, uh, came out, just, just said that, um. I would say with regarding Mezuro, whether I take it off or bind it with it. Uh, it is what it is, uh, and what I mean by taking it off is a good. And so, if we're trying to free up more time, that itself, just removing that from the priorities, it is a significant effort for staff this year. Taking out what, uh, if anyone else, um, it's still gonna be a lot more. So.
Guess my. Correct, say, of the five, so do we wanna keep it as one of five? Things not necessarily not make it a priority, still be a priority, but. Or.
Which, so I mean, do we have to stick to any number?
No, I'm just.
It is gonna be a priority, it's just that, why do we have one through five? You know, we could have one through six, it's correct.
Right. One reason.
There's no magic to the numbers, uh, it's more of an exercise of, uh, staffing capacity and resources. Um, and my point is, no matter what you do with it, still gonna be the same amount of staff and resources, so.
Doesn't sound like, um. That was your first start. Okay, so I heard a couple common, uh, topics, not maybe all five of us, but the, um. Tenant rights. Two of those. Tenant rights. And. I would add that under tenants' rights, I put that smoking, something to that as a category. Um, it's really too unoriginals. Um, so that was to me, is that something you guys want to add? And what category of the five does that go in? You need to know. Okay, so, uh.
So I guess my question is, is it possible to have this as a part of that? I'm not too bothered. Okay. So I'm. Adding them and then staff them.
So my understanding is pick a. Okay, some of this.
So we're actually going to cancel now the priorities, which are those five or a different version of those five or some variation of that. That's our goal. Actually, we're, I'm, um. Certainly one to have some consensus. Your council tell us. Probably what you do is come back to you and tell you, okay, this is what you're doing. And maybe, we're, we can't get all this done, we're gonna have to tell you, this is a heavy lifting, this is a. And that would be a discussion. Certainly getting any feedback, so we're not spinning around, we're developing. Something, um, I'll kind of, sort of something to push something.
Okay, so regarding tenants' rights, starting with that one, rent control and the smoking. Part of the no smoking in the building, part of those, that's a topic that, uh, but. So is that one project somewhere? Say.
I certainly do think so, uh, so probably too, but. You know, we had, uh. Programs with projects set up before and, you know, there are just plus minus in terms of directions. We do have a little dispute backline, just kind of active. Um, one of the problems of that has been that it's not required at four to attend. We want to strengthen that. Something. But, uh, less than or attended, uh, meeting and, you know, it's really challenging. Uh, so I mean, we could strengthen our current, uh, this will affect many standards. Sort of, yeah, so there are elements of that that, yeah, let's see what my best, how we. This is to where you are still, to, to.
And I have a quick question about that specifically, like, like, what, what would the, is there an A tier? Or is there a typical meeting when, if you did have the landlord there and the tenant there and there's some sort of dispute? Like, is it simply just like, hey, I'm raising my. I'm sure there's lots of different disputes, like my roof's falling. That nature, like what, but in a nutshell, like what does this really cover, this specific program that's apparently out there?
Well, I, I give you a snapshot from that local more context on this video. Um, right, our existing program is, is non-binding. So fires more, I need to come to the table. And then any, any suggestions are not mine. Um, so that's a system that we have. Um, I would say just more generally trying to get some feedback, I said, um, try to open the. It's interesting and to get stuff on, this is a bit of, and I hear it's important to somebody. Um, so I'm not here to say that you should or shouldn't. Tell you that trying to stand up a new housing program as we escape, like, uh, conversations like. Housing manager that's on the court, and I think it's first year has got. Just getting the wheels moving on the housing program and trying to catch up to, um. A lot of new sense of what we have and funding and set up a sustainable program and then begin the implementation of all. Uh, I probably always in a housing. Uh, and that's not saying tenant rights and these questions aren't as important as those. But I will want a chance of moving things back to sit down, housing staff. Chat. What is the plan for the, because what we're really good at, being careful is being methodical, getting stuff done. And keeping our focus on work. Been, been, you start getting distracted and trying to do too much, that's what we're doing. Um, and so it's a matter of what in your housing program is the highest priority to you. A lot of other things that you, uh, maybe as much of a high in this first year. I want to sit down, sit down, uh, and. Start thinking through what is it we're really trying to achieve this first year? And if you want to do tenant rights, maybe that's the one thing you achieve this year and deal with finding. Some of those other things. It's not to say it has to be at all or not. I'm not saying it has to be at all or nothing, but.
You can do both.
Some trade-offs there and I'm not here, uh, to, to tell you what you are. But I can tell you that a housing program, there's a lot of things to work on.
Oh yeah, I, I completely understand.
People want to take that, this is important stuff.
Sure, but, but.
And rights and rent control isn't.
Yeah, when it comes down to though, like, like ultimately for me personally, how I'm up here. We need to make sure that the absolute basics are met, our residents, you know, and housing is, I mean, we're doing a whole lot, it's obvious. So much our staff is doing on the housing channel and I'm loving everything I'm seeing. But this is one thing I feel is being really neglect. And it's something that other cities are starting to see, that it's a necessity. It's, you know, these capacities are happening, which is present, it's like, there's, you know, this mass exodus of people. People want to live in, certainly, and tonight, like, actually two people, technically, from Wood and Reno, the other unofficial little. Essentially the same thing, if we keep going in the same direction, other cities have, I think, uh, some, uh, some measures. But anyways, I, I'm just saying that, that I think that this really is important to what we're doing with housing. To look into it, but, but I know it's more work, I know that, sorry, but.
No, my point isn't, uh, for you to feel guilty about providing work staff, but that's not the issue, it's about in context, that. Where does that fall? And I provided you, uh, a big show, like a housing program, you know, it looks like. So I feel like your take is sort of having context, it, it is very important, but how important is it when compared to these other things? You know that we need to be done this year and that's what we're going to bring back to. Is what that means, like, you can make those value judgments, say, you know, this is still number one on my list, that's completely okay.
Yeah. They can bring it up last year too.
No, absolutely, and I'm not trying to, uh, to pre-achieve on, on your suggestions by, uh, by, by some context, so. We can be focused on what we're trying to achieve, not trying to achieve too much if we're not successful.
I totally understand that, and I also still like to take.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Which is how it works. Or. I'm wanting to. Like, how.
Yeah, I, I support it to this point, or, also I'll, I'll say this and, and. Hopefully this helps clear up what some of I said and just provide, you know, how I, at least I see, uh, of it. Um, I, 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 I think I was trying to be, uh. Uh, thoughtful in, in, in using the broader category of tenants' rights because my, my, my. Approach, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, this is just the, the approach that I think I tend to take on issues, is, um. Let's start with what the end goal is in mind and what the strategy is and, and then, um. Figure out the best way to get there within the context of everything else that we're doing, our facilities, our strengths, our limitations. And, and so, um, I, I would consider any one of the suggestions and that area that they brought up tonight. But to, to use that specific example, I don't have enough information today to just to throw out an example, say. Campbell needs to pass an eight percent rent cap. I, I mean, I just wouldn't have any of these that on. And, and so I very much support having this conversation. I, I do think it's a gap in our, in our mouth. And I think. I, I, I'm, I'm gonna disagree with you a, a little, Brian, but I think ultimately I'm, I actually agree with Robert. Which is that I, I, I think keeping it in now and keeping the discussions going actually is a way to look at this holistically. Um, because I, I want our housing editor to help me, know this is a, uh, you know, and obviously you're not the help me, but this is. Um, at least a topic of interest, any indifferent, you know, I, I haven't established the right report on it, but. At least more than half members have mentioned it and, and whether the answer is, I, you know, two council meetings from now, we're gonna. Bring up a, a policy or, or whether it's, you know, here's five-year strategy on our entire housing program and your health. Or that, I, I, I want that kind of six strategic book, not just for this year, but also thinking, uh, uh, longer term for. You know, we can't do everything overnight, but that doesn't mean that it's something that's our priority. So, so that's where I am today. I think it's a, a good discussion, um, to have and, again, I'd be more in support of any of you. That brought up, uh.
And I would. Discussion as part of the work plan, having. But often. Into their enhanced. So, if our program were built, right? To need to, to be extreme. Are different amounts of resources and should be discussion. And you talk a little about tenant rights, but also the other side. Tenant, I mean landlord is also a price. Some of them are involved. Feeling. Uh, that, that's the way to call it. So I think we have the.
So in that regard, would the topic be called tenant's rights or is there another greater? I agree the same thing with property, which are even running streets, so they're on two sides. So is the topic tenant's rights or some other way to?
I think, I know.
Ten, tenant.
Oh, let me just throw this out here real quick. Um, I really respect people who worked hard enough to not only afford their own home, but afford another home. That they're allowing other people to live in, then they're taking it in. I understand, makes sense, my, my own mom and dad, small and pops who are doing exactly that. Eighty, the main house is being rented out, some dogs and, and, uh, they are very close landlords. As far as I know, I don't think they've raised the rent once on them, but, um, but my point is, if you're at that level of success where. You have not only your own house, but you've got other house and you're looking to make a decent income from it and keep maintaining the property. Uh, all due respect, but at the same time, it's like, I'm just seeing it from a perspective, like, we're so fortunate to have that other house in it. If things are getting tough, they're, oh, I'm not making enough money. It, it's just like penalty to the people living in there. You know, and it's just like, well, there's always the, if it gets so tough, you can always sell the house, you're lucky enough to have two houses, you're not. Sell them. That's just, that's just my perspective. It's just, we're, we're at a point in our time, here in the Bay Area especially, where too many people, there's mass exodus of people to leave here. And I think that unfortunately, like we heard earlier, thirty percent raise, so. There needs to be some kind of, this is not a unique story and people are getting hurt all the time, so. So I'm fine with large discussion and everything, but landlord rights, landlords have a lot of. And I know, and I know, I know all the details. Trust me, my, my folks, I've heard all the stories and there's been issues there too. I wanted to, but, uh, but ultimately, you know, I'm thinking about the person with the least. You know, I've had so many things that were forced in without just, I am unable to, just because they couldn't afford it. Or there was a rent eviction where, oh, we're just gonna work on the complex a little bit then, oh, you gotta go, bye. So anyways, as you can see, I'm passionate.
So there's subsets to this topic, uh. Is it tenant's rights, tenant landlord relationship, but there's enough that you go, I mean, come back.
I might suggest rental policies be put inside, that, that's the gap that I see right now. So you want that.
But, but that, that changes the focus of. Kind of what, and. The policy. And that, that, calling it rental policies as a category that have rent control topic. The, um.
Tenant landlord.
Tenant landlord, rent control, tenant rights. And then what I, the subset of that I brought up about whether to make policy. So the category is rental policy.
So I have a question about. I have a question, was it? Suggestion of. Smoke. Uh, that's, that's, that was. For the, for the. Seven months. I see. Okay, I saw, we have a smoking. These types of issues.
Don't think it specifically addresses, uh, smoking within multifamily units. I'd have to double check that. I know there was discussion of that at one mid-time, but I don't think that we prohibit. Someone smoking in their own unit or out on their own patio.
Yeah, I did find the policy, the top, the topic is should there be. Multi-family, no smoking or make it okay, but somehow looking at policy.
But with throwing in the word too. So to me, that mean that building some construction, like the, uh, development. Campbell Avenue as a, to, um, build apartment, it's already established.
Right.
To me, the rent issue is, are you buying both? For that, or is it, is it only for construction?
I, how you, first of, existing ways. I would want to see if, like, building all this housing, we're gonna be multi-mudics. Is that part of what could be a, the housing person to take on, is that should be a part of it as a sponsor? To me, are the rental policies falling? Under, if, the subset of a subset of policy, I don't know how you.
I don't know how you require a developer to. I, I don't. Would want a building candle, that'd be certain on a summer.
I thought some cities do have, at least that's why I did.
So I'll wait a little.
Yeah.
So what I, I wouldn't expect your husband to be, being smoking. Uh, from what, a little I understand this question. Smoking policies, I'm not aware of the technology, so the issue is, I think two. Multifamily buildings, there's some, I'm sure, smoking, I suppose, for you to. Smoking side when shared. On the technology of vending and. Share. A little I do know in, I, I, there are some cities that do smoking. Both those instances, inside buildings that share each other's system, which affects all buildings, not just. Or there's, I'm assuming to, you should go outside and smoke. Some days. It's a little I know about how this is, it's typically not.
New building. And I and I think, and I and I'm being dishonest over my day, if I ever wasn't to. I had a subset.
Topic. Uh, so one of the other ones I've heard uh, from Dan and Ann mostly were about the fire services. And valuation of existing facilities, and maybe I'll ask Todd, have you done? Assess assessment of the fire station.
He did. At my disposal right now, but again, it could be that in the facilities assessment.
So it is already in a facilities assessment. You brought up about the fire stations, the consolidating the two stations, and then you give a mutation that was needed. So he's saying already has been.
Something. Heard. And in my discussions with the fire department, I'm not here. Being, it's the basic, yes, it's being addressed. Still. Assessment assessed and. That's my impression.
So have we done it from our level of assessment or from?
We haven't shared the findings outside of. This is a fairly recent. Uh, some work that was completed. And as I say, we're beginning to use the early stage of some projects that we see. Kind of an easy target. Um, but we have not shared the findings of that with the the uh, with the fire, with county fire as of yet.
Well, I was gonna add the. More to to. The facility, but.
That was an element that I thought, kind of talked about fire service than the idea of consolidation for. Situation best first. Now, supposed to complete a more in-depth study, but in my preliminary discussion with the city manager. Houses seem like taxing. The taxes we receive, the property taxes we receive that cover fire service. Was more. To relinquish that. And and the fire department. Could have all the responsibilities, that is true, no longer stations. But. Eventually towards, right now, it's toward that. So I don't know if anything further needs to be done, but that was an element that I was. You should have some discussions with the fire department, structure of buildings, see if and what we should be doing to. Improve the quality or. Say what it is. But so in other words. You can't just go on the back of. Call the policy that we haven't shared with. Give their feedback and see if they feel perfect to decide what we can or need.
So Todd, would this fall under now, valuation is fairly new? Haven't talked to fire, would this fall under that category of what you're already, or should make that? Add that to our list of strategic?
Well, it's it's probably two two different things, because I I I think. Look at the fire stations as as city assets. And we have a certain obligation to maintain all of our assets, right? There's always gonna be a cost implication of performing certain work. And uh, you know, and financial advantages that kind of be captured back from time. That's, that's how we've treated the assessment. If what we're considering, and I'm not sure we're considering this, or not, is a is a different way to to have to have a different agreement with fire or to who and who and how the improvements should be funded. That's a different conversation, right? Because right now, what we're looking at is is a condition assessment that will give us the condition of every city facility. Uh, it will no doubt have a uh, it'll no doubt have a financial deficiency that will be staggering for all of us. Um, and so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to collaboratively collaboratively come up with a plan for how we're gonna fund all of these improvements across the entire system of city buildings. So if we, if we do outreach to uh, one of our partner agencies, I mean, I think that's a worthy conversation. I don't know that that is. What maybe comes from what Todd was talking about, by having a different or dedicated funding mechanism, but I don't know that just a policy discussion in terms of the assessment might be more operational for how improvements get get funded or not.
We certainly could have like, you know, a workshop where we bring some representatives of fire service in. But they feel their needs might be or. You didn't treat it to that, just sort of get an assessment, stand, say, fund all these things. Maybe there's some grant money. See grants or something. When the federal state. They might have some ideas too. Or they might say, no, we don't need this this year, but in two years. And this and this and then. Right now, it seems to me, though that. Because I don't.
So I if I could just add really quickly, this is that may, uh, today, actually, I had a conversation with the services director. I heard talking about um. Current needs and he actually are taking a minute that they've spent between the two Campbell stations, they've spent two hundred dollars to do facility up specific to their needs as a fire department, to the infrastructure of city property. So I know there's ongoing conversations with public and county. Needs for improvements. I know specifically. It's coming to next week. So those conversations, I don't wanna overstep on Todd and then, but they've been working. Facilities assessment, but I can tell you since I oversee the fire contractor. Chief and uh, and the facilities director. Their consultant.
Did you say that last part?
We had an open dialogue, we told our agencies on on the needs on um, the board.
That soon doesn't leave me anywhere. You know, it was talking around a little bit, not getting to the point of, do they really need something and how much will it cost and should we do it or not? I mean.
So 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 let me provide a little bit more direction as we um, as we're sort of taking this condition facility assessment. I'm trying to put pen in the paper and figure out what that means. That is through and conversations, we'll get a conversation with county fire. But what's gonna end up is is C I G projects. And with me bringing the C I G draft scan. Um, any of these will show the next five years plan. So we'll see where we've staged these improvements. How we prioritize those based on. And what other uh, capital. And we can probably provide more context to that discussion.
Yes, I would agree with that, but I do think there's a difference. So it's a touch on what what the city manager and the police chief are saying. I think there's a difference in. In in what the assessment does. What the assessment really is going to do is to tell you what condition current. But what what condition the building is, does it need a new? Is a system failed? What it doesn't speak about is what the chief was referring to. If there are specific improvements that fire or for that matter, it could be any other agency in a city building, don't have any others. But if they want improvements to facilitate more efficient operations. Those are not something that are gonna come out of the facilities assessment. That is something that only they would know. And so we are, we would not be aware of those things.
So Ian, uh, please for a fire valuation of the facility with your topic. Have you heard what Todd said that there has been some level of evaluation?
Well, it's more about. Fire. About. I don't really know what that means. Whether it's. Um. It's a question. It should be. Chief, Brian.
And we've started those conversations and I've I've spoken to my counterparts to my the city. Kind of basis. Comparison to other stations. Part of the information. I actually doesn't, not a full review, it doesn't appear to be city's practical interest to yourself. It'll process approximately the same.
So that was Dan's question, which is very important. But to that point, if there's needs in the part of our discussion really was, we have these these aging fire stations. And do you now selling them? The opportunity, that's not happening. But looking at preliminary research of how much the property does buy. Parasitic. In somewhere. And so I think this was Dan's point, I mean, speaking, canceling. I think our conclusion was, well, gee, if that's true, it was preliminary, it wasn't. It's accurate information, and if that is true, we are much better off trying to fund. And plan for it. So there happens. I think that was part of it.
Well, what I'm thinking is we are gonna come back, we're gonna. Things that are happening, some areas and Todd, is that something that could say to us at least? All the things you brought up have been addressed or wanted to add into a policy. You've heard, I think, a lot of what comments were.
I I think it's fair when we bring back the ca- uh, the capital improvement draft, plan draft to you, as we can talk about the. Assessment, thank you, his words, uh, and what that means and and specifically. Um, to catch up with, I did, I did see. Fire stations. To discuss, because there is some.
Um, next one, I saw some problem now is the stoplight system delays timing. Um, so you had. Signal priority. So is uh, how would you put that as a title for a category? All of this, transit, signal lights. Timing, modernizing system, just putting category of traffic.
Prioritizing traffic.
Signal.
Transit. Could actually hear from staff of everyone thoughts on this because. I I'm not, I I haven't looked as much into the traffic side. So it's it's possible that those will be in opposition, so I won't send that out as a poll. I don't know, I I I just wonder.
Well, there's uh, there's certainly no opposition. Um, I I think it would be.
I I mean, I would they be mutual relations?
Did you say that last part again?
Would they be mutual?
I don't think so. I I I I I think the uh. I I think it's certainly something of worthy consideration, right? Because we we understand that that this would be all about helping transit and more work. And effectively, it's it's three quarters. It's Baskin, Winchester, Campbell. Yeah, I I don't think it's an all or nothing. I mean, I I I think if the discussion is more about policy and whether we should move forward by adopting a policy that may take several years to implement. Seemably scalable, like my corridor example. Um, I I think that is something that that could be explored. Um, I think the financial magnitude of the implementations, but maybe makes a few of us a little bit nervous because.
Sorry, let 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 me interrupt, because I I think I was like. That part, as I said, I'm 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 in support of and I I think probably is, I I I'm just trying to be um, inclusive of the question that the mayor is asking, stance point, which is really about speeding up cars. Which seems like a different goal, but I don't know enough to say whether this is a different. Where you told me.
I don't know that that that's mutually, mutually exclusive. I I I think the, on the, certainly on the north and south corridors. We have, to some extent, we we have we have signal timing coordination. And I don't think it's a secret to anybody that the AM commute is northbound and the PM commute is southbound. And I think if you're playing along with the the uh, trying to find a way to to make the signals work benefit those directions, I think that that is a good goal. I think where it could get a little bit tricky is where we have cross corridors. Um, because Hamilton, as I mean, I don't wanna bore you with glory details, but but Hamilton has variable timing over the course of the day. And it plays off of San Tomas's festival. So what you don't wanna do is 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 create one of these scenarios where you've extended a green or something on Baskin and it has ripple effect across Hamilton. So I I think it would have to be done very carefully, but I do think by and large, if the goal is to help transit and move typically during the commute times, I I think that 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 is certainly a worthy effort and I mean, and a worthy cause. Um, it will largely help, I think, I I think it would help traffic. But there could be times where it may not. And and one of the examples that we think of is, is a bus running counter commute, trying to extend the cycle. It it could have, so I I I don't know enough about it at this point to say whether it would be good, bad, or what the non-attended conferences would be. But I think it is something that could could be evaluated.
Great, well, so maybe it's traffic, signal efficiency.
Well, and my point was not just simply during commute times, but in during other times where these unreasonable delays of change of signals.
So finding out with that, I know that I experienced that. I was wondering. And so I. Check. Sure enough. Something happened and. So it was an easy fix. So to me, it seems like a. Then. Todd or Matthew says, hey, double check. So. Yeah, I mean, to me, to me, there's, it's two kinds of.
Can I be happy with that? That's that's your policy. I'd be happy with, I'd be happy to send an email to. Right? It's okay with me, it's okay.
Okay, so let's go back to trying to create priorities and and trying to give them some level of a category of. So. Transit policy, transit evaluation, is what I'm hearing from guys is for the whole bus, then you're possibly putting all the ups and downs. So is that, if we have rental policy? Or something?
Okay. One, we could say transit signal priority, which is. Policy is. Guy can either go broader. Talk about. Drive. Safety or something, but it sounds like Sam just cleared up.
Trying to get a consensus if that's what everybody, we're gonna have eight more work. So is this a priority three? You have two, basically you have seven. So you wanna add this to a poll, one of our priorities?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Specifically. Trying to say a, like for us to. Percolate. Yes, like. Talking about traffic signals, but then. We're not really thinking those also affect. Transit. Times, like that's one of the things that. Todd, actually, it's just about how it's crucial, it's critical for those bikes to keep time. That inefficiencies just, you know, they go up through the. Just the amount of time.
So you're saying you support the topic. Support the topic. I'm kind of on the fence on it, so we got, now it's like three of. Three, well, three and a half. So at this point, we can say, oh, it's a top priority. Do you? Something? So. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed Elliot, three counts is three, okay, I'm sorry. That's I'm sorry, okay, so three, that is one, transit policy, transit evaluation, transit signal.
Yeah, and I'll I'll say a quick thing, we don't need to keep on this, but I I would basically. You know, cut to the end, I I would support it. At significant funding.
Right.
Some role. Yeah. Yeah.
Sounds. And that's why I would. Present to me. TA, because they have some ideas on how to potentially get pretty big funding potential. To do, so that's my suggestion, so.
Okay, so we have three basically. Uh, that like to have transit signal, transit policy. And also Sergio, you brought up about transit VTA, potential grants for bike and ped, so would that fall under this category or?
No, that's that's all, that's already. Spreadsheet, I was just saying.
Okay.
Now, let's really be on top of that. Just.
Guys have enough. Okay. Um, see, uh, I'll jump into, I'm jumping around, but the cannabis op that came up. Uh, Sergio, myself. Bill has already has worked on updating the policy and. But is anybody supporting uh, looking into evaluation of whether you could actually have?
But but what I said specifically was just to see if. Like, is it worthy of pursuing? High terms, is it gonna actually bring? So, right, it's hard, it's about that, some failures in San Jose. So I I would. Doing a study to see if.
That that's the topic, do we want to continue? Level of cannabis as part of our priorities, Bill is working on the policy. Any comments for do we want to add retail, whether it's taxing, whether it's a bigger topic on. Is that one of? Priorities?
Um, I would just do that. And also even like, we are. Do we have to look? Just that it might generate some tax benefit to us. I don't think. We have to look at. We are a very. We have a lot of schools, we deal with school districts. There is no doubt. That marijuana is bad for kids. Or throwing brains. Evidence is good. We have to look. We are a small city here, but San Jose is just pretty easily outside our city limits, and there are kind of the stores where it sounds like. Um, so it's very easy for people to, or. Being allowed, of course, in compliance with state law. Um, the delivery of medical. That. People can grow a certain amount. Use. So. Have no restriction on people using. To. Stores. It's bad. Um, if you want to get into the health issues, there are additional studies coming out. That indicate that some people feel a certain amount of. Anxiety and so on. Some pain. It's fine. Um, but there is also evidence that daily. Indicates a higher level. Congestive heart failure, cardiovascular problems as well as. There are a number of senior residents who have. Issues. There are hyperemesis syndromes and things, so it's not without its potential, and I'm not trying to scare anyone. It's not without its potential. Um, something, but it also has certainly potential. For health adverse effects as well. I'm actually concerned about. Big atmosphere of area. To families and schools. It's. Because of the size of our city and. Easily ingress and egress. And it's. To us. Having license in our stores, which also increases. Potential for. Home force would take. Time to see that feature.
So you do not support us looking at cannabis as the. Your other thing? So you also.
Well, we have to.
Yeah, that that's one.
And and that's gonna, you know, it's not gonna be. It's.
No, I know. Do you want to put cannabis as that exploration of all the things that you talked about as? You said no.
Uh, I I simply am just looking at the. Funding aspect of it, so if if it comes back, it very well should come back and show that it's not very successful, or else then it would be. Thing for you to point to, but I see well, no. It's like, look, it does make us money, so I'm really curious about that, it's like, will it or?
So you want to, you want to have it, keep it as a topic?
I, well, I would just wanted to see. Study to see if this, I am looking for. And.
That would mean if you do that, then would you like to see cannabis come back as a topic?
No, I'm not even saying that, saying it's that I would see. Just like, is, there was like the the green rush, right? Same reason, same as I about a lot of failures, and so. You know, if you can. To that. I just, I would like to pay it to me.
So you do support.
I think it's never been generated a whole. Some economic damage to it.
Okay, let's uh, let's. There's pros and cons on each side, the question is, do we want staff to pursue the topic any further, certainly. Eliot, you're saying I would like to know this, Dan's saying no, so as a topic, you're about to stay as a topic.
Yeah, I'll just see that.
Well, I I'm gonna try to lead by example, ju- just out of respect for everyone's time, we saw members of the public here, it's not the last topic. Um, rather than give you five minutes on whether I think marijuana is good or bad, I'd like to just give a yes or no. To the interest of. Um, I'll just say yes, I support that.
Uh, no. Take that on. And I I'm supportive of it as a popping from bigger picture and those pros and cons. I see our workload getting tense here. At work, we're not even done on our list that we came up with, so I would say at this point, I would say no on. So we've got these four too. So it's, it's not that I don't necessarily support it or I'm against it, it's that I just see our workload, but this might be to us, so. Okay, so that one is not going to be for. Um. Trying to cover the big ones.
And I would just say that, you know, the public's business is done, and. So, you know, if fire anyone has something to do with them, I'm free to express it. Whether it's.
Okay. So, as a work plan item and a strategic planning item. Say not right now, no, and two. Okay. Got that, um. Finance, revenue stream, financial stability, a two-year budgeting cycle, and. So, your concept of your financial stability at first. Uh, any new technical beats, I mean, some of this are already onward plan items, so I would want to clarify. Uh. About. Maybe Anne, you can.
I just meant that financial stability is a part. Our budget. Items that we're adding. And. So. Somehow. So, um, I mean, that's a, that was kind of all our.
Financial stability. So we have financial stability as one of the five categories, and so we already have. Progress items under financial stability. Uh, what I heard right now, though, is you were talking about a revenue stream, so is that something that we? Because actually, we fail a lot of things, but a revenue stream. So I'm trying to.
I believe that Sam's coming back in the next month, so. Ideas to look at as far as.
Yes, yes, we're coming back to you with the discussion of the potential revenue. Uh, and we also in the meeting to. Scott for. Having. A. So there's some. As. Comes over by the. Those were. Uh, said those.
So I was hoping you had more. So.
Yes, I think. So one, seeing how. Financial stability and revenue.
So as a priority topic, are we limited to finance, a revenue stream? Friends said we are, then have some. Scorecard. We can keep that as a topic. Always this career. And Anne, you, just some other things under financial, talking about first and technical, it's like system replacement.
My time is. Needs today as well as future. I think. Sure. Budget. This year.
Okay, so so we have the topic revenue. Stream revenue. How uh.
We we have a broad board of financials to go. Kind of. Score and. So we thought about that. Should also be. Sure. Soon.
Said yes. True. Okay, so should clear that one.
Never take financial stability, yeah.
Okay, just trying to check off everybody's things here. Whereas we talked, Elliot talked a little bit about a vacant parcel tax, would that fall under?
Thank you.
Okay, so that falls in. Checking off. Here. Okay, um. So, uh, Anne, you talked about uh, public awareness and single, single use plastics as a public. And you talked more about public awareness to that topic, or you talked about that also. Most specifically, both talked about plastics. And um, I got a little more detailed in that topic. About recycling as a whole, and are we following just the rules, are we doing stuff on that, so there's a category? We want to say something about recycling. But as what's a part of.
I I just know that programs are. That press. Arm out. Uh, six, that's. Finding. Just like. Yeah. Concentrate it up. To. Of educate public. For that. So. Stan.
Okay, and that that was on my, too, so is that um, how would we, how would we put that? As a priority, sustainable, sustainability is the category that we fall under, so what is the subtopic under sustainable? That we want more. These. That topic.
I I I would agree that it falls under sustainability, and and as you can see, there were some things under sustainability that had to do with us moving from the. Current contracts, with current hauler into the new, the next round, so. I definitely think you're gonna see some change in the work plan items under that, so as we move from that transition, we'll probably see some of, some additional work plan items to talk about. Public engagement and public education complying, you know, more generically with SB thirteen eighty-three, but it'll have to do with whole three-stream diversion of trash. Recycling and and. And compostable material, so I, you're happy with that, I think that could be kind of a work plan fix rather than a whole priority.
Okay.
Uh. Sorry, that, sorry, I'm. To committees, the solid race, also the storm. And. Not that it's possible. During. But in addition to that, then by Rob become. So our executive record is solid. For the. District, our JPA, and making a free presentation of the contract. That matter, we could include Sheila, uh, with respect to stormwater management, some of the things that we are. Part of it's to uh, decrease the amount. Since they get in to stormwater, which obviously. Preuses. So it's always. Same thing that. China's probably. To be included or subsumed underneath the whole topic of sustainability.
And and. Maybe Todd, maybe you can tell me this is already. It's what you said, but I I see this as a, this is one of which is, are there public policy decisions where we can do? Um, I know from that is. Stay locked. Um, and then to what are our practices as a. By ten, why? Not by two, by stay locked, but just what are relatively. Things. That probably.
I I think we. We can definitely bring some of those forward to council, because there are, there are some things that that. And well, there are some things that we're doing that you probably didn't know about yet, and there are some things that we haven't started doing, that when we start doing them, we should. Make people aware, but 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 certainly the example that. Summer concerts was, I think, a great example. Some of the education requirements, by the way, will come by way of the of the hauler, so a lot of this will be done by West Valley. Uh, West Valley Collection. So it it it'll be a a a group effort, but you'll start to see this core, we like the summer concert, because that was the whole environment, and you'll start to see this. In the future at things like the farmer's markets and downtown street fairs, so. Uh, we'll we'll certainly get that in front of council, so you might know what's coming, I agree with that councilman, Todd, that would be helpful to have a representate, a representative from either or both of the two JPAs. Just update council at that. Sort of all that.
Okay, so it does not sound like it needs to be added to next year's priority list. Rest on your share. Uh.
And you'll have work kind of things as well that go along.
I I just. Want to say, I I mean, you see it as a as a value, I, sustainability, the product category, and so I think. Part of it, I I just want to say I've not been happy with the service of West Valley to recycling and. And this was before your time, so it's no fault of your own, but they never rolled out the. Transit. Supposed to do the apartment complexes, I'm still waiting to receive mine, and when you think varsity. Percent. Truth, that, that's just something. So, I I was disappointed that that contract was, that I mean, after the air, it. All of it changed out, but. Getting that isn't really. But that that's not good. For me, it's just saying, like, oh, that's that's how we're gonna. Okay. And I know that's not. Say, so I just want to make sure that it's up.
Same. We started. Every. Two less. Like. Very. Certainly. Parents before. I'm slacking. Now assessing.
Okay, um, so what I'm hearing is. Okay, um, so what I'm hearing is it's not necessarily gonna be a big priority of this for the following year, that we. So a lot of that, you still have the one issue.
I I'm I'm okay at this point, but Sam's.
Okay, um, so then, uh, you had under. Travel, panels, more holistic approach and the T I O. Is that something that wanted to, uh, have as a topic, have it fall under?
I think it's simple, we've been talking about it, we've seen people here. Have site, it's good, so, I think our social. Better, I mean, wouldn't be bad, we did have somebody else strictly, I'm not saying that. But I'm at least.
And and just to be clear, I'm not saying we have to have a, I know, I'm not saying I have a problem with the. Right now, just I it's something I hear. So just to make sure we.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so we got that one. Um, we did have a, I do have two speakers here. Appropriate. Discussion to have the two. Okay, so I have Sean Mendelson, stand up over here.
Hi, I'm Mendelson. Thanks for letting me talk, Mayor Bybee, all the council members, I.
Yeah, stand over, stand over there a little bit.
All right, sustainability, number one priority it should be, according to me, according to a lot of folks, you guys saw on the agenda seventy-five, the lady had to leave tonight, but she's twenty-three years old. Got seventy-five signatures supporting sustainability and doing a strong climate action plan. I brought it to you guys attention in twenty twenty-one January, three years ago, nope, two years ago. And I'm really happy with the reach codes that we passed, I appreciate Rob, and I appreciate we hired Tiffany Hudson, but. What we have here, even though sustainability hopefully will be a top priority, is a delay, so it's gonna take a year before we actually enact the climate action plan, and what's important to me. Is to see the things in a climate action plan start to be implemented, as a lot of you know, we passed those great reach codes in Campbell. And November of twenty twenty-two, I was really proud of Campbell at that time, at that time at the meeting, we had Mayor Bybee, Councilmember Landry, and Councilmember Lopez. All on, generally on board with the notion of kitchen remodels going electric as being part of a code, a reach code that we easily pass, and people will support this community. To to keep up with the the times, and then second to that, San Jose is gonna be the first carbon neutral city in the world, I believe, and San Jose is gonna represent, and we're enveloped by San Jose. Least we could do is follow suit and electrify all parking spaces, Sergio, excuse me, Councilmember Lopez mentioned the equity issue of not getting the stuff that West Valley promised. I believe if we electrify all parking spaces for apartments, as well as residential homes, making it available electricity for cars, so it's not passed on to lower socioeconomic people. It will benefit the whole community, so we have climate justice as we travel forward with the climate action plan. Enact those reach codes this year, make that part of the sustainability thing, and then when the climate action plan is enacted, these things will already all be in place, and we can get ahead of those future costs. If we take care of this stuff now, these reach codes now. Uh, thank you for your time, have a great evening, and I love you. And I have two kids in Campbell, and I should say, they're high school, middle school, no one's talked to them anything about climate change, no one, and they just passed AB two eighty-five with the state. And it's gotta trickle down, but I'm here to educate the community, school for free, make use of me, I'm a climate activist, I'm ready to communicate all that, thank you so much.
And did Hannah leave, I think Hannah left.
Yes, but I speak on her behalf, she said, she said, check out what the agenda says about the seventy-five people, she's got signs, she's all about climate activism. She wants to live in a safe environment too, and she said, I can say that.
So we have a climate action plan that is on our current list of things, so we're keeping that on this list. And sounds like that catch should cover a lot of these topics that we had to raise.
It's not gonna be enacted until next year, so on top of our.
So we have a climate action plan, we're working on it, it's staying on the list, it's under sustainability. The reach codes, I brought that up also, would that then address this whole lawsuit thing, and whether we have to go gas or stay gas? Is that falling under this climate action plan?
Yeah, well, we do, start. So we do have reach codes. Third reach code. There has been discussion among all the cities that have reach codes, I understand. So we have some administrative help, here in a position, we are. We administer a weekend, so I think this. I sense. So our intention is to. The only thing I add is there are some updates to reach codes and. Our billion officials with net those, uh, if there's any adjustments.
So it does not sound like we need to add on the. Wow, I've actually checked off a lot on my list too. Uh, let's see, which one have we, okay, so this live music that we had a speaker talk about, uh, whether we allow a cover charge. See that only this topic, is that something that is just, uh, for us to consider as a priority, or is that something else?
Wait, I want to see what goes into a vitamin T. Discussion.
Okay, wow, I'm done with Sergio's, all right. Uh, let's start on Dan's, so Dan, you had two topics, one was historic preservation and marketing. Uh, is that, uh. What do you see as a kind of overriding discussion topic within our work plan?
Well, I I would just, you know, I think some of the things that we're all kind of bringing up, uh, topic, work plan items as they are, as a select feature. And I know this means title, which I understand, I also recognize that some of the things we bring up, rightfully so, they're concerned, turn out to be. And so I'm just saying. You know. We should pay some attention to, uh, our historic past and sort of market it. Out of the city, and it's just, it's to all cities' advantage, sort of market themselves, and sort of. Show their contributions to the very. God knows, the largest cities do all of that, and they. Money and so on. Have a way to, so I'm just suggesting that. Try something, you know. Keep an eye on it.
Okay, sweet. If if I interject, one of our existing work. Because we had a conversation, so. And every issue of some of those that put on inventory. Has to put a percent versus those that have to put on inventory. And that's an issue that Dan and I have talked about, and so is wrong, and there's sort of a bite at that apple, we're doing, uh, looking at the existing work right now. Say, or how would you? I think there's a lot of.
Um, I think in addition that I was seeing this as, um, sorry. Big part in that, and I, that's not a hundred percent of it, but I I think that's a big piece, especially compared to sound yourselves, and I was also thinking this when I brought up. The. Strategy, I'll I'll call it, um, that's.
Um, I was looking at it as part of economic, so. Part of, part of. Trying to check out. To have it there, I'm not sure.
I think the answer is seven.